Unless it's an emergency, uh, normal law enforcement, you have immediate, uh, uh, contacts, you have a violator, you have a, a citation or arrest, that's different with health and safety. And, and what I'm finding out is having Judge, am I going to move this?
You may.
What I find out is happening, there's a confusion is to do is supposed to be doing this. And some sheriff's deputies are involved in health and safety code violation, uh, remedies, and they're not familiar with the laws. Uh, the laws are completely different. Uh, most folks who go through the academies are not versed in health and safety codes. It's health and safety code three sixty-five, the water codes are involved, one thing or another. It's a totally different discipline, totally different training. And, and what I'm, what I'm going to read basically provide resides in the local health authority. Now, who is the local health authority? Uh, is the local health authority here?
She was.
She was here.
We don't have a local health authority.
Well, we do as a health inspectors.
Really?
That's the best that we have. We do not have a health department, but we have a health authority.
Okay.
Which is a health inspector. And, and one of the health and safety codes says, "A local health authority who receives information proof that a public health nuisance exists, and the local health authorities, you're sick and shall issue a written notice ordering the abatement of the nuisance." When you go through the health and safety code, it talks about each day a violation is a, is a, uh, separate offense, the court shall abate, and it applies only to the unincorporated areas of the county. It lists what a public nuisance is, keeping, storing, accumulating refuse on premise, uh, rubbish, newspapers, abandoned vehicles, refrigerator, stoves, furniture, tires, and cans on premise, three hundred foot of a public street. Like I say, these are not a discipline that your normal deputy, your normal law enforcement is aware of. Uh, in my opinion, and as a law enforcement officer, most officers don't know how to handle this. I know there's a recent case where a deputy did an investigation. The person showed up at the JP's office while the deputy had to sign a complaint. So the case was let go. Uh, it takes time to investigate these. Some of the things you have to go through, number one, you're, you're advised if there's a violation. Okay, then you discernment, who did it? Was there an envelope in there with a name? Uh, was it on somebody's property? Let's say there's an envelope with a name. What you have to do then to follow the health and safety code, you do a thirty day notice. You send that individual a thirty day notice letter, certified return receipt. Send them a copy of what you found. You have to take pictures. It takes time. Let's say they don't respond. Then you have to go to the JP that's involved in that area, file the case, swear that you are aware of the codes, swear who you are, and sign the complaint. Then that person is summoned into that office and appropriate action is taken. If it's on land, let's say there's a bunch of refrigerators, one thing or another, tires on land, you don't know who it is, but you know who owns the land. You have to go investigate, who owns the land? You go to either the tax appraiser or our tax office and find out who owns it. You get a copy of that document. You send a copy of that document with a picture of what you found on there to that individual with a certified letter again, saying, "This is on your property. If this has reached you in error, please advise, we'll take appropriate action." If they do say, "Yeah, it's on my property, I didn't know it was there," you work with them, one thing or another. It's completely different discipline. And I think we need to get this back where it needs to be in the health authority's hands. I think there's been a tendency to say, "You know, that's not my job, it's your job." It's, "No, it's not my job, it's your job." In my opinion, and, and for the record, I did this for ten years in community affairs, so I'm a little bit familiar with it. It needs to go back to that health authority. Now, what we don't want to happen, and this has happened in the past from what I understand, is someone calls in, another department calls in and says, "Hey, we've got this big bag of trash out on County Road one oh one, and we've got envelopes in there that it belongs to John Doe, would you do something?" And then a health authority, "Oh, it's not my job, you take care of it." That's not what we want. That's not the purpose of this. The purpose is to get it taken care of. And, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, we're not interested in fighting people, putting people in jail, we just want it cleaned up and we don't want it done anymore. So, I, I'm disappointed that our health authority is not here. He was here earlier. But this needs to go back to that health authority, which is the community affairs office. And, uh, I'll answer any questions that we might have about this right now.
I, I got, I got one question. Is, is the description that the health authority have here, is that any description to do or not?
Uh, unfortunately, the only place that it's listed, and I, I have the position description here, it says, "Knowledge or ability to learn Texas state law relating, relating to health and safety codes." And then there was one other place. Let me see here. It talks about, uh, in summary of duties, litter and solid waste control, knowledge of ability to learn Texas, Texas state law relating to health and safety codes, state law relating to health and safety codes. Uh, yes, it, it should be.
Well, maybe we need to amend or address.
I, I think possibly we need to look at, uh, to be sure that everything's necessary within this position description.
So let me ask this question, is this the one that the, uh, salary committee has on record now? Is this the most current, or is this what the county has on record?
This is what the county has on record. I got it from personnel.
Okay.
And it is a two-page.
Let me look at what we have.
Judge, do you want me to read this sentence?
Sure, yeah.
One thing that concerns me when I, when I review this position description, I, I, I think it's an error, let's call it an error. The third sentence says, "This position is primarily an office administrator or non-manual work related to the management and or general business operation of B County, which requires a high degree of skill and ability to perform under emergency situations as required." I don't think we have the liberty to have only office administrator positions. So I, I think, sir, that this needs to be reviewed and, and updated possibly. It's probably an error, but I think we need to review that update. And I think we need to put the, uh, health and safety code is health and safety code three sixty-five, the water codes. There's a, a, a book that is given to each officer who's enforcing those codes through the council of government. We have attended training down there numerous times where they go over these things on how to enforce them. And I think that needs to be emphasized in that department, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Dewitt. Is, is that in the form of a, a motion to request the salary committee to review this, uh, job description for the community affairs director and, and, uh, make additional specification with respect to the matter that you raised this morning on nuisance, as well as to look at the summary of position description and potentially revise that as well?
Absolutely, I couldn't have said it better, sir. That is my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion and, and a second, as far as further comment, I would just, uh, request that, uh, you provide the salary committee with your notes and, and your insight, any other information they might, uh, hold on. I'm sure they'll, they'll have you on a feed, though.
Not a problem, sir. I'll, I'll be happy to assist anywhere I can.
Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing this to the court's attention. Is there any other, uh, discussion?
I, I know currently, Mr. Gonzalez and the sheriff's department, we had a meeting a walk back in reference to issues of, uh, people dumping all, all over the county. Anyhow, and we have worked out an agreement, so what's being proposed today is instead of going with the sheriff's department, we're going to go with the community affairs. Is that, that's what's being?
If, if you will, Commissioner.
Which is fine.
It needs to go back to the discipline that is trained in how to handle it.
Mr. Gonzalez, you got any, any thing to say about this?
Jan- January ninth, that's when we got our meeting. You were there, uh, Mr. Southman and, and Mr. Ronnie Jones, and, uh, Mr. Johnny Gohad. And, uh, we got together and kicked it around. The problem I was having, I, I didn't know who to call, when we found ID. Now, you might have, uh, ten, fifteen illegal dumps. One of them might have a, one out of the ten or fifty will have ID. And, and my concern was, if he had ID, who would I have to call so they could take care of it? And, uh, eventually, uh, you were there, so Mr. uh, uh, Charles Southman said he would take care of it, uh, Johnny was there also, uh, but he, he kind of, the, 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 yeah, and, and said that he would take care, and that's what we've been doing to this day, and it's been working.
We're trying to give you some clarification on that, on the, on the amendment we make on the description, okay? And that would help.
My main concern is just if it's got ID, they, they, uh.
Who, who does it go to?
Who is going to take it?
Yeah.
And, and Charles Southman said he would, his department would, and that's how we've been doing it, and it's been working. So, uh, again, I just didn't know who to vote to, but I, I would vote along and then he would, you know, I was just then getting murdered.
So we'll, we'll, so we'll leave you and the sheriff in when we sit down and finally make calls. But I think, I think you're right, if it's, if it's something that the sheriff is willing to go and make it personal, that's, that's likely to work. Uh, but if you need direction, we'll give you the direction you need to go.
Thank you, Ray.
But I'll, I'll, but I'll say again, the problem you get into is if you get a violator that says, "You know what, uh, you don't have the authority to do that," uh, because it's a different process to follow. Legally, you have to supply a thirty day letter. You, you can't say, "I'm going to give you citation if you don't clean it up." It's, it's a different process, totally different process.
Right. Yeah, and it'll probably end up requiring the assistance and participation of all the various groups. Sure, Southman, do you have any input at all?
No, but just wait and see what, what just decided.
Yeah. Do you have any objection to having, uh, community affairs department handle the writing of the letters and, and, and that technical component? That's kind of what I figured, is that we can work this in pretty easily.
There could be some technical issues here, because we have been writing citations.
Okay.
We've, uh, actually written several.
And it depends on the sit, each individual situation. There are some litter, you know, you see somebody littering, that's a little different than health and safety codes. So, but we get it worked out.
Well, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez and Sheriff Southman as well. Agenda item number thirteen, introduction of new B Area Partnership President. Commissioner Haggard, this is your item.
Yes, uh. Thank you again, uh, I would like to introduce, uh, Randy Sykes. He's, uh, going to come up and, uh, give you his.
Excellent.
On our new and improved B Area Partnership.
Welcome, Mr. Sykes. If you'd please, uh, address the, uh, identify yourself for the record, and then please proceed.
May I remove my mask?
You may.
So, so good morning, everyone. My name is Randy Sykes. I'm the new president and CEO of B, B Area Partnership. And for those of you, uh, who are not familiar, B Area Partnership is the, is the lead economic development agency for B County. So a little bit about myself, I'm a, I'm a twenty-seven year veteran of economic development. Fifteen of the past twenty-seven years have been spent managing economic development agencies and honing economic development programs for, uh, that have a very strong focus on marketing the assets of the communities to companies basically worldwide, any company looking to expand their operation. Uh, we've been marketing and promoting the assets of the communities I've been in to those, to those companies. I have a solid track record of new industry recruitment, local industry development, workforce development, international trade, and also agency management or the business of running the, the business. I recently served as the president and CEO of Penn Northwest Development Corporation in Mercer County, Pennsylvania. This is a very rural, uh, uh, community in Northwest PA. So over the past eight years, I was able to generate over two thousand one hundred leads. I sent out five hundred and thirteen prospect proposals. I hosted a hundred and nine site visits, so a hundred and nine companies that didn't know they wanted to be in Pennsylvania. I hosted them and showed them various sites in the, in the county. And as a result, thirty brand-new companies are now in that community. They invested over two hundred and fifty million dollars in the community and created over sixteen hundred new jobs. During the same time, I was able to assist two hundred and fifteen local industries that were in danger of downsizing, retrenching, or God forbid, closing their doors. And the assistance allowed these companies to remain open, expand, and retain over thirty-six hundred jobs in that community. These companies also invested about two hundred and eighty million dollars in the community and actually added an additional twelve hundred jobs to the workforce. Even recently during COVID, as I was hired here to serve as the B Area Partnership's president and CEO, during my interim time, uh, leaving there and coming here, I actually closed a deal and landed two more companies down there. A company that produces aerospace parts and a high-tech vending company that combined invested another twenty million dollars in the community and created another three hundred and fifty jobs. So that was kind of my swan song out of that community and into this community. So what does this all mean for B County? And how does the, the B Area Partnership fit into all this? Well, as the lead economic development agency for B County, our mission, if you peel away the layers of the onion, our mission is simply this, to market and promote the assets of B County to any and all companies worldwide that are looking for a low-cost alternative for their corporate expansion, and to ensure that they invest here in our community. So how do we plan to accomplish this for the community? We're going to work collaboratively with various partners to do the following things. We are going to attract new businesses to B County. We're going to provide educational, business development, and expansion opportunities for local industry to grow. We're going to serve as an advocate for infrastructure improvements and site development in the county. We're going to foster a good working relationship with our local, state, and federal elected officials. We're going to inspire regional collaboration among our various partners within the region. And as a matter of fact, I, I actually have a meeting today with the folks from Corpus Christi Economic Development Corporation, where we're going to be touring some of the sites here in B County with a site selection firm that they're bringing in. So we're going to do, do lots more of that. We're going to control costs of the organization while maximizing our funding sources for marketing. We're going to grow new funding sources to market the community. We're going to maintain communication and transparency with the community. We're going to become a, a more effective marketing company, creating a very comprehensive action plan. And ultimately, we want to become the go-to agency in the region for economic development. Uh, we're going to work diligently to create a clear and concise action plan, which over the next eighty days I'll be working on. Uh, we are going to include in this plan very specific goals and objectives that will allow us to remain laser-focused on the following things. We're going to fill that funnel with leads. We're going to qualify these leads. We're going to put proposals in the hands of those companies that are looking to expand that'll clearly identify opportunities for them to expand right here in B County. We're going to work to convert them to a site visit, and once we get them here for the site visit, we're going to close the deal. And as I mentioned before, my previous community with a hundred and nine site visits and thirty brand-new companies, that's a closing rate of twenty-eight percent. So I hope to have that here as well, if not better. Some new committees that I'm going to, uh, form at the B Area Partnership that are going to help us be successful is I'm going to form a new industry committee, a new industry recruitment committee. And we're going to need volunteers to help meet with these companies that are coming in to help convince them to invest in our community and create jobs here. I'm going to form a marketing committee to see how we can better utilize digital marketing and social media as a way to reach these targets. And I'm going to form a sites committee. No, not a, not a Randy Sykes committee, but a, a site is in a, a location committee so that we can build an inventory of all the properties that are available so that when companies are interested in expanding, we can easily and quickly get them out that information to help place them to come here for the site visit. So that's, that's just a, a, a brief introduction. I thank you for your time this morning, and I look forward to working with all of you to make B County a more prosperous community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Thank you for coming in and, and welcome to B County. Does any Commissioner have any questions?
No, I'm impressed.
Thank you, sir. I, I plan on meeting with each of you and, and many of the other stakeholders to ask, and, and I believe, Judge, you and I are going to meet after this meeting, just to ask a few questions to get a better understanding of exactly what folks' expectations are and what types of companies we should go after. But, uh, I'm, I'm, I couldn't be more excited to be here. My family arrives next week, so I miss them dearly, and I can't wait till they get here, and we're just glad to be a part of the community.
Welcome to B County. To echo, to echo what you're saying, welcome to B County.
Thank you.
We're all smiling under our mask. Thank you, Mr. Sykes.
Absolutely.
Moving on to agenda item number fourteen, resolution authorizing submission of selective traffic enforcement program step grant application under the Texas Department of Transportation. Chief Deputy Ronnie Jones, do you have any input for us? Is this mostly housekeeping?
Yeah, it's a new, uh, new grant loan, same line as Stone Garden, first star, moves on the ground, uh.
Okay.
It's a, it's, it's a twelve.
Give a motion in a second. Ms. Cantu, you have the floor?
Uh, it's a twelve thousand dollar, uh, grant. It's only worked on holidays, uh, so the next five holidays is when it'll be worked. Okay, um, that's all great. Grace has already looked into the grant. Uh, there's a small match would prob, that would probably be the friendship, the fringe benefit portion, which is minimal. I mean, if we're talking twelve thousand dollars, um, it, it's minimal. I mean, fringe benefits, I would think of, you know, a few thousand dollars or that.
Any further questions? Comments?
It's costed any man.
Would be the fuel portion?
Oh, fuel.
Well, fuel does cost.
Mexico. Does it cost?
No. Well, he just said it, it doesn't, so I, I mean.
Doesn't cost you. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number, uh, thank you, uh, Chief Deputy Jones. Uh, agenda item number fifteen, acceptance of federal fiscal year 2020 Emergency Management Performance Grant Award. Mr. Willow, I have you down as the presenter for this, uh, this agenda item. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Mike Willow, emergency manager. I will have as a backup is April ten-two, who could explain the details. But bottom line is, we're already at the end of the year. We've already, you know, pretty much finished everything we need, but the way the government, right, the contract is kind of like an eighteen-month process, and the others. So, uh, if you have any specific questions concerning the payment, I would defer to Ms.
And that's correct. It, it, it has, we start getting the MPG like we just finished 2019 collecting, and they just send it when they are ready to send it. And what we do is this grant is the one that, um, we give half of it back to the city. Um, so whatever we collect throughout the prior fiscal year is what we end up dispersing back to the city. It, it, it just depends, it varies what they pay per year. But, uh, this is for 2020, so we'll see that in a couple of years.
Great. Is there a motion at this time? Does anybody somebody? Have you got a motion in a second? Any further discussion, sorry, my, my phrasing, yes. Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, Mr. Willow. Agenda item number sixteen, declare road and bridge inventory non-functional, unsalvageable, and removed from net data inventory list.
Move for proof?
Second. I have a motion multiple seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number seventeen, approve renovations at Mineral Yard for possible future citizens' collection center, including permits and construction bids. Commissioner Dewitt and Mr. Gonzalez, would you like to lead off, sir?
Hold on, I, I'm.
You'll fill it as much as you want. Okay. What we have, gentlemen, we, we talked about this, uh, previous about our collection station and the, the need to move it. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez has got some prices on, on what it's going to cost to finalize that. Uh, they've already done some preliminary work. It's, it's looking good up there. They cleaned it up. Uh, we were concerned about the longevity of our current lease, and because of the situation, uh, I would like to declare this an emergency and ask the court to, uh, and, and Mr. Gonzalez will give us his prices, uh, authorize a, uh, budget amendment to pay for this as an emergency. Mr. Gonzalez, do you have some bids for us, sir?
Uh, I have a, a total, total price of, of green material and the labor, which would be right at thirty-five thousand.
Okay, that would be my motion then, to authorize the movement of thirty-five thousand as a budget amendment as an emergency, uh, to finalize this, uh, move to the mineral yard.
Absolutely.
My motion.
And, and it is for, not just, how can I word this? The collection station currently that we're utilizing will be in operation until?
Until we get this probably in operation.
Okay, once we get this in operation?
Yes.
Will it over?
Yes.
But we haven't signed, uh.
Yes.
For a total year?
We, we, we have signed the new one, yes. It's going to take several months to get this.
I understand, but if we have a total year commitment, should we stay there the whole year since we, and we already paid?
We, we pay every month.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, and there's a, there's a codicil in the, in the lease that, uh, it could be, we can move out.
Okay, okay.
So we've got a timeline, you've got a, a year, right, basically?
Yes, but, uh, we, we plan, uh, get it.
If we're going to do this.
Of course, we have our November, December, our holidays coming around. But, uh, it, it should be three months, four months before the.
Yeah, it's going to take a while.
And, and, and we'll recover at thirty-five, um, you talk about this, because we will no longer be paying.
That's true.
Somebody else to use their, uh, land. We'll be using our own land, so in, in the long run, it's going to pay for itself.
That's true.
Right?
Yes.
At twelve thousand dollars annually, it's going to pay.
Yeah.
Ms. Cantu, anything further on this particular matter?
Uh, no, I just, uh, if Ray, you know, if you want to get with me, uh, so we can see, you know, what you, what you have, um.
Sure.
What you collected.
Yes.
And so a budget amendment, you'll see, uh, next, um, next Commissioner's Court and, you know, in the reappearing item.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any further, uh, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Court. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Agenda item number eighteen, expo request to use auditorium for annual Christmas party from the Bito Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez, I think, were you going to say a little something on this matter for us?
Good morning, good morning. While we argue, I'm the promotional director of the county expo center. Uh, we do have a request, uh, request from the fire department for usage of the facility for, um, Christmas. Um, and so it's my recommendation that we would allow them to use it, um, at least be, uh, it would be something that we wouldn't move forward normally, but this is the first time that they legalized it, and, but I just wanted to raise to the court, uh, for a second recommendation, and I think that, uh, Mr. Delgado also had, um, something that he wanted to say.
Why? Why? I brought my PR person, I'm sorry. The Colonel Delgado, Assistant Fire Chief, also Constable, three. We have, we have used the expo center a couple of weeks ago for the training, that was Mr. Rodriguez, because our training field was full of water. So we did some training out there with our rush trucks, just driving around at night, and it worked great. Thank you. That was awesome. We'll be getting you up again. With the COVID and everything, the city, uh, community center may not be available because they're still in there for the city hall issues. That's the one we've been using for years. Uh, the expo would be a bigger area with social distance. We're trying to bring back the normalcy to our firefighters, and I told them we're going to have a Christmas party one way or another, whether we park in the middle of the streets and have a party. So we were hoping to use the expo center. Uh, if there's a cost, I would have to read that back before the department will approve it, but that's, you know, we're looking at either December the sixth or the twentieth on a Sunday. We're not there. We would be there in daytime, that's great, and then probably be done by ten o'clock at night.
Judge, if you will, I'll make a motion to approve at no cost. Now, we do require damage to the project. Okay, that's responsible, if there's no problem. It, I think it's the least that the county can do to say thank you to all the work that you guys do as volunteers to provide a facility, so that's my motion.
I'll second.
I've got a motion in a couple of seconds. Any further comment? I've got a motion in four seconds. Is there any other comments, discussions, question items?
Anything for the person. Thank you all for what you do.
Yes, thank you very much.
You guys are always there.
So, great. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Assistant Chief Delgado for making your presentation. We have addressed agenda items number 19 and 20. We are at agenda item number 21. Submit formal request to City of Beeville for the temporary annexation of the B County Expo Center for the limited purposes, limited purpose of conducting court proceedings. I set this on the agenda last time around and we passed on it. The district judge got back with me that afternoon and said, hey, we probably need to go ahead and do that. So, I am requesting a motion approving me to-
So, move.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
No, we don't, we don't argue with district judges. First thing you'll find out.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 22, Update discussion of possible action regarding B County COVID-19 status, preparedness, and contingency planning. So, we are still diligently working through the testing machine acquisition process. The ball is squarely in my court. And before the day is out, our grant manager will have the blurb that she needs in order to actually start engaging directly with TETM. So, I apologize, just, yeah, anyway. But we'll get it, we'll get it done. And by we, I mean, I'll get my part done and then everybody else has been doing everything they can. The, I wanted to, the only other thing I wanted to discuss is, there's no, I try to make a way to say it in an articulate manner for anybody that's listening or anybody that's in the audience that wants to share it with any friends or other interested parties. Last week, the governor of Texas reopened, went through the next stage in his reopening process, reopening Texas, and allowed bars and other similar establishments in the state of Texas to reopen. That reopening process is subject to the governor's reopening Texas minimum standards for safe and health protocols, which are available at the DSHS website and are probably also located or accessible through the Texas Department of Emergency Management website through a Google search or any other state agency, maybe even the governor's own website. They are also attached to the most recent periodic update that we pushed out locally last week. There are two sets of regulations, one for bar owners, the other for bar patrons. Each is several pages long with many, many restrictions and protocols that are required in order for the bars to operate. In addition to that, the, those are the governor's requirements for being open. They're the same, same source of requirements that restaurant owners have to comply with. And grocery stores, every, every type of entity in the state of Texas pretty much now has its own separate chart of governor's recommendations. The governor then gave each county judge, each county in the state of Texas, which is 254 counties, did I get it right?
Yes.
I just wanted to let everybody know that I do know that number. And each county judge received the option of opting in his county or her county into this, this governor's bar reopening authorization. I elected to opt in for B County. I am not in charge of the bars operating legally in B County. That is the obligation and authorization of the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission, TABC, and local law enforcement to the extent there's some other extenuating circumstance. So, with respect to our bars that may be open, I know that TABC, I was trying to find on my phone, TABC has communicated back with me with respect to my opt-in affidavit. I'm not sure if they approved it or denied it. But if you are a bar owner, if you are a bar patron, I don't really think this applies to you. But if you are a bar owner, or actually, just if you are a bar owner or a similar entity, B County has opted in to the governor's plan to allow bars to reopen. But if you have any questions on whether or not you can reopen, the date that you are allowed to reopen, the requirements that you have to reopen, or any other components, questions with respect to reopening, you should first start with TABC, okay? And it's, it's just like that. I will say this, the governor also allowed in this affidavit that I had to sign to opt in, I have the ability to opt out for any reason at all. So, we don't want to, we don't want to go through another shutdown. We do have, October is going to be an interesting month for B County. We have a great concert coming in at the end of the month. We have the Texas Mile coming back at the end of the month. Bars are open for a certain amount of time, potentially in the coming days. So, as the world regains normalcy around you, I urge you, I encourage you to continue to maintain social distancing and wearing the mask. The mask mandate has not expired. That's another thing I'd like to comment on, to the extent that there's anybody listening anymore. There has been, there have been some news reports, there have been some comments in our community about San Patricio allowing their mask mandate to expire, about Nuasis County allowing their mask mandate to expire. It is irrelevant whether or not any county in the state of Texas has a mask mandate or not because the governor of the state of Texas has a mask mandate in place, effective, in the entire state of Texas. So, B County does not have its own B County mask mandate because we don't need it. The governor has a mask mandate, and when he chooses to make a change, to roll that back, then we'll, we'll know that as well. At this time, I'd open the floor to any questions, comments, clarifications. Mr. Willow, I guess first, let me give you the floor. Don't tell me you took away the mask mandate. And just made a point for no reason.
I can sit down, but I have a lot of information to share.
Please.
First, first of all, Mike Willow, emergency manager, I need to do this.
Yes, sir, you may.
I'll be breathing heavily here. Hurricane Harvey, I know it's not a COVID thing, but I got some very encouraging news. Over three years ago, you know, some properties in B County were devastated. We worked with the Coastal Bank Council of Government, the CBD RG, the Disaster Recovery Group, Corvus, which we're a part of. I believe, two months ago, Commissioner Salinas had two home giveaways that were set up and from Hurricane Harvey, where they qualified, they followed the rules and everything and got it. Well, we have two more home giveaways in Skidmore Wednesday, so tomorrow. I sent, got the word yesterday, sent you the email, so, surprise, sorry. But one is at 3:00 and one is at 3:30. So, I encourage, after the commissioner's court meeting, that, you know, I'm going to be there and, you know, it's a big deal. We need to get our lives back together. So, it's, it's good. So, the wheels of government work, and as we all know slowly, that they're working. So, that's encouraging. It was there for the, especially the two families that were trying to make hope in Skidmore this month. So, that was good news there. COVID, we have met with Department of State Health Services and we're already talking about plans on how we will disseminate the vaccines. This is the talking stage. We're looking at a January timeframe at the earliest, is what I'm being told. So, I will be getting with all the stakeholders, stockholders. We're going to get together and formulate a plan to where we're going to be required to try to get the entire county of B with the vaccine in as minimal time as possible. They say two days. That is not going to happen. That'd be 15,000 shots a day. You know, I don't care. You can't do that. So, we have to formulate a plan. We have to formulate locations. We have to formulate, we have to get with the law enforcement because we will need armed guards because this would be a very sought-after commodity that we have to guard. They have to be frozen in, you know, until you could give the injections at minus seven degrees. I mean, there's a lot of things that we have to come up with. So, that's just coming down the road. That's where we're looking. COVID-19, they're working on getting enough syringes. That's going to be the next shortfall. Will they have enough syringes to give the vaccines? We're still waiting on the protocol, who's going to get first, second, third, and fourth. Fortunately, I'm at the age where I should get it first because I'm old, I got issues, a lot of issues, even more issues. So, I'm going to get mine first. So, but anyway, we encourage everyone to get the vaccine. We also encourage everyone to get the flu vaccine. These are all things coming down from TETM, you know, more so than not, we want everyone to get their shots. So, but we are doing testing still. This week, we're kind of slowing down with elections. Looking at the military coming by. I'm going to get with Skidmore again to maybe use their venue for the weekend. And maybe have the military come down over the weekend and pick up our slack since we won't be able to use our bathroom for a while.
That'd be great.
So, but that's what we're doing.
It'd be great, too. I don't know, Mr. Willow, sorry to interrupt you, if we could try to maybe talk to Pawnee or Pettis and see if we could do at least try to get some testing for the folks up in the northern part of the county, kind of like Skidmore.
We could do that. First thing that comes to mind would be the fire department in Pettis. You know, they have a good site. And Pawnee, we could always talk to the school there as well. They have an excellent-
Cool, either one. They both got good facilities.
Okay. And you, that's all I have.
Do you have a recommendation on flu shots?
I recommend everyone to get it. I got mine here.
I got mine.
I got mine, you know, so, yes, sir, I recommend it. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. I don't think so. Thank you, Mr. Willow.
Thank you for all you do, sir.
Are there any other questions at all, this court? That concludes our agenda item except for agenda item number 23.
Motion to adjourn.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second? I've got a motion in a second. Further discussion? I really just don't want any. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen.